This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. And our first thing on the agenda is approval of minutes.
So move. So move to approve the minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all approved. All right, and we have some guests here tonight, and we'd like to have, anybody like to have public comments? Has anyone signed up?
No.
Okay. Next on our agenda is lakes at Star Hill Townhouse Projects at 123 Taylor Ocean. The final plat review. Frank, would you like to say something about this, please?
Yeah, I've put a copy of the preliminary final plat up on the screen for your review. It's the same map, that same plat that is included in large format in your agenda packet. This is actually a relatively straightforward process and really more of a formality at this point. The planning board and the Board of Commissioners approved the preliminary plat for the lakes at Star Hill Townhomes last year. Those of you who've been by there, I'm sure you've seen that they're nearly complete with the first four units of a 12-unit townhome project. They're also very nearly complete with the common area improvements, the shared driveway, the parking spaces, some of the other improvements, they have septic systems in place, some of the stormwater improvements are in process. They have approached the town seeking approval of their final plat. And really, all that is, is that's the formal document that creates the actual lots that can be recorded with Carteret County Register of Deeds. In most instances, the applicant will complete all of the required improvements prior to submitting the final plat for approval and recording. In this case, they've not yet completed them, but they're getting close. And there's a provision in the Unified Development Ordinance that allows the applicant or the developer to post a shorty bond or a letter of credit to guarantee the completion of the remaining improvement. So this is a copy of the formal final plat, that is the document that would be recorded at the Carteret County Register of Deeds office if it's approved by the planning board and the Board of Commissioners. This is a copy of the preliminary plat that was approved last year. These first four buildings, I'm sorry, these first four units are nearly complete. The road and the stormwater and the septic area for the first eight units are nearly complete. Really, the only elements that are not yet complete are the septic system for the remaining four units, some of the remaining curb and gutter, the asphalt overlay for the road, the landscape buffer, and a few other smaller items. The UDO allows the applicant to post the shorty bond and a letter of credit. We have in your packets a cost opinion prepared by Tidewater and Associates, the engineer for this project. They have estimated the value of the remaining improvements yet to be completed at approximately $83,224. We did require a 10% markup just to provide some cushion. So the proposed bond is $91,546.40. This is based on the status of the improvements as of last week. We needed to have something to bring you all that represents where they're at at this point in time. In reality, if you all vote to approve the final plat, I'm sure that construction will continue over the next three weeks or so. And by the time this goes to the Board of Commissioners at their March 10th meeting, I expect that more of the improvements will be completed, and I expect that this cost opinion will decrease maybe as much as half or maybe a little bit less than that. So I expect that the, a lot of the improvements will be done by the time it gets to the Board of Commissioners, and we will secure a revised cost opinion at that time. If the Board of Commissioners approves the final plat based on the bond, we will simply require the bond to be submitted after Board of Commissioners' approval, but prior to us signing off on the plat and allowing them to record it at the Register of Deeds office. This is an important step for them because this officially creates the lots that these condominium or townhome units are located on and enables them to sell them. So that's probably a key goal for any developer going forward. We believe that the final plat meets all of the town's requirements and presented for your consideration tonight. I know a representative of the applicants here, as well as a representative from Tidewater, I'm sure they'd be happy to answer any questions as well, as will I.
May I ask some questions?
Please do.
I know, I noticed that it's taken a while to get these going, and you got March 10th for the next phase, is that correct?
March 10th is the date of the Board of Commissioners' meeting, where theoretically, the board would approve the final plat if everything's in order.
Do you all think you'll have that all ready for March 10th?
This is Josh Edmondson with Tidewater.
Thank you, Josh.
So I was just talking with Paul before the meeting. We hope to pave, Sunland hopes to start paving Monday. So that would essentially take care of asphalt, we do testing after that. Street signs would go in. So I would expect, like Frank said, probably half of this bond will be reduced by the time we get the Board of Commissioners. Landscaping will probably be the last thing, as well as a septic system for the last building. They'll probably be the last two things that are completed.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions? Want to take a vote on the approval of the plan?
May I make a question?
Based on the information supplied by staff, and I quote, "At this time, the final plat for the lakes at Star Hill Townhomes as presented meets all applicable town requirements." I move that the planning board approved the final plat for the lakes at Star Hill Townhomes and submit it to the Board of Commissioners for their consideration at their March 10th, 2025 meeting. That's my motion.
Can I second that?
You second it?
Yes.
In all approval?
Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
The next item on your agenda is administrative site plan review of the Suncoast project, a commercial office space and lease unit. This is a one-acre tract, D-20 zoning, or town center, located off of Taylor and Ocean Road next to the Aquatic Center. This month, I conducted a review with Tidewater Associates, Josh Edmondson. And there, as you know from the UDO, there are many different requirements that they have to meet. They met a substantial number of requirements, but the ones that they did not meet are listed in your, on page two of your agenda item. And some of them are relatively minor, some of them might take some time. They need to provide a copy to the town of the proposed sewage treatment and disposal facilities. They need to show the location of existing and proposed utilities and connections. They need to provide a statement on the document that says flood zones are subject to change by FEMA. They need to show the finished grade elevations of all, at all the building corners on the drawing. They need to state the type of construction the building will be constructed out of, brick, frame, whatever. They need to show the location of stormwater features and how stormwater will be conveyed to the state stormwater permit site. And one item that changed in the course of the review, they had, as you can see on your plan and on the screen, they have some one-way traffic flow. And this was to accommodate the requirement for, I believe, it's 34 parking spaces. And there is an existing easement that comes up to right about here, and it's recommended that the easement come all the way back to here so that there's never a question about, you know, do these people driving cars in the future have the right to cross into this other property? So that's something that they have to work with the adjacent property owner to obtain. Additionally, the fire marshal reviewed the plan, and his comments are in item two there. The fire department access is met, the building separation is met, the water supply is met. Instead of one NOx box, three NOx boxes are required. Engineering plans need to be submitted to the fire marshal, and obviously, those could come at a later date. The address needs to be posted on the property entrance before the work starts. Fire protection must be available when the project is being worked on. Once the building is secured, the keys need to be provided to the fire department, and the fire marshal wants to review any further changes, and a follow-up plan review will be submitted once the building plans have been submitted. Josh Edmondson is here tonight, and the fire marshal is here as well, in case you have any questions of either of the gentlemen regarding the plans and the proposals.
Ms. Holt?
Thank you, Mayor Chair.
Josh, is there any urgency? Why can't we wait until these conditions are met? Thank you.
So obviously, and Paxton, I'll answer your question. If you don't mind while I'm up here, let me, let me go through and address each one of these comments for you and tell you where we're at with those and why a couple of them have not been addressed yet. Just starting off with A, sewage system. We're doing an engineered option permit. Originally, we were going to do a conventional system through the county health department, but in talking with the owner, we've decided to do an engineered option permit. So we just received our soil report back from soil scientist Friday. So he has told us essentially, he's, he's assigned us with the infiltration rate. So now, we can design the septic system, which is going to be panel block. So we will be able to provide that information within the next week or so. Again, we can provide a location of all utilities and connections, that's easy. Also, the statement about flood, flood, we can add that to the plans as well. Finished grades and elevation of building corners, we started that process. Again, we have set building grades, you're looking, accessory building will be the lowest building, it'll be about 18 and a half, 18 and a half feet. A finished floor elevation, and then it'll go up to 19 and 19 and a half for the front build. So we can, we're close to being able to provide that as well. Building type, I'm not sure, did you have that, that I provided earlier this afternoon? Here is a kind of a copy that Mr. Gagainis provided, he's here as well, the owner and developers here, of the kind of facade of the building. It's going to be white siding, PBR 26 siding, roof 24 gauge, black seal, standing seal, so Gavin has standing seal. Windows are black, wood stained exterior doors, and black 16-inch gutters. That's kind of the look that will be on the exterior of this, this is building one. And I'm assuming, Mr. Gagainis can correct me if I'm wrong, building two, that back building will have a similar kind of style, look identical.
Excuse me, what did you say the material is for the side of the building?
The siding?
Yes.
It is PBR 26.
What is that?
Which, that's a type of metal, it's just a type of metal siding.
Metal siding?
Yes.
Metal roof, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. When it comes to stormwater, I'll explain it, not to overcomplicate it, hopefully. So this site is part of the overall master stormwater plan for this entire complex. It's allotted through a permit modification, 2,800, excuse me, 28,500 square feet of impervious surface. So the design of the existing infiltration system on the gem site accounts for runoff from this site. So our site will sheet flow, there'll be no inlets, it's all sheet flowed, it'll all sheet flow to the existing infrastructure in the gem site, which on the southwest, southeast corner, within about 20 foot of that corner, there's a catch basin inlet there where our runoff will go to. Now, we'll tell you to be a good neighbor along the entryway, the entry road there, where you see that angled parking. Our intent is to put a small infiltration swell there just to capture and allow some water to infiltrate before it flow, would flow over to that catch basin. As well as the front, within that buffer, there'd be a small swelling there to catch grade runoff coming from that front part of the building. But everything will sheet flow towards kind of the south and east, towards that catch basin. There'll be no on-site stormwater control, control structures, we're not required to have them on-site per the permit. And we will be applying for what's called an off-site, off-site control measure, which is the already permitted infiltration system that's part of the gem. Really, that's it, all this information. We have copies of the permit, the state stormwater permit that we can provide, and we should have the finalized, final grades, final grading and drainage within the next week, along with the final design for the septic system. And as far as the easement goes, yep, as far as the easement goes, we are in touch and in contact with the gem. And, you know, they granted that initial easement for access, so I, you know, we don't foresee any problems with that. We just have to get them to agree to it and then have attorney draw that up for us.
Well, I'll, I'll repeat my question, and since y'all are here, is there a reason for the urgency? Rather than waiting until all these plans are complete, it's just three weeks? Sir, yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Mr. Gagainis, I'm one of the owners of that property. Our only urgency is that we all know how the wheels of construction move these days. So without this approval here, it would just cost us three more weeks of waiting for us going to the engineer to approve plans to move forward in that information, which is still building companies. Just the things that we need to know, that we have a plan that's workable, so we can move forward, starting our wheels rolling. So when we do get final approval, we're ready to go. So three weeks does not kill us, but it does slow us down.
And one last question, I hate to be so ignorant, but would you show me where the catch basin is, please?
So it's not located here, but I can show you.
Oh, no wonder.
I can show you, it's right in this area here.
Somewhere in here?
Yeah, and site, site falls, highest elevation is in here, and site is falling this way, everything's falling this way.
Also, when will you get the owners of the land around it approval? Do they have to sign off on that, Frank?
The only adjacent property owner approval that's necessary is the Cape Carteret Aquatic and Wellness Center associated with that access easement being extended slightly to the south. But there's no requirement for any of the adjacent property owners to sign off.
She would have to sign off on this?
The design that they've put forth, they've included a one-way lane basically from the front of the property to the back of the property. And this area right here is private property, it's owned by Cape Carteret Aquatic and Wellness Center. So, you know, most people have a very good relationship, but God forbid if ownership changes or relationships sour deteriorate, or if, for example, maybe the Aquatic and Wellness Center wants to build something right here. We just have indicated that we'll need to get an access easement that allows the people who are driving through here or are coming out of this parking lot to come out this way and back out the access road. As Julie mentioned, there's already an access easement on this first area here, so it's really just a matter of extending it back around the corner. I would think it would be fairly easy to obtain, but we'll, we'll wait and see how that goes.
In the town of Cape Carteret, is Public Works available?
No, this is, this is, this is the driveway to the Aquatic and Wellness Center, and the Aquatic and Wellness Center is kind of down here below the television set, and then Public Works is the next parcel over from that. And on the other side over here is the Western Carteret Library and Learning Center is up on the opposite side. But there, there's no requirement to secure any concurrence from those property owners.
And the corner center, the owner brothers own that land?
So I guess the question would be, would the motion need to be made as a preliminary concurrent to all other, I mean, we've kind of worked out what some of them have been so far. In other words, you've addressed already what they've been, how would you?
I think, you know, if, if the planning board is so inclined, I would make a motion to approve the preliminary plat contingent on them, satisfying items A through F, and also the access easement that we've discussed there. So, I mean, that would be an appropriate course of action for you to take. Ideally, in a perfect world, I'd like to be able to bring these to you with every I dotted and every T crossed. We're certainly sensitive to the owner's concerns about the slow wheels of construction these days. And so we try to be helpful whenever we can, but ultimately, that decision's up to this, this board here and ultimately, the Board of Commissioners. If you're comfortable making it contingent on them, meeting those requirements, by all means, move forward. If you're not, you certainly have the discretion to delay it to your next meeting.
I myself make a motion intentional, okay.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Have you approached the owners of the gem about this easement?
We've been in contact with the owner from the very beginning on where we're going. We've talked about traffic flow moving through that spot. Early on, I was not aware that easement didn't continue around here.
I see.
So I don't see that as a problem, our relationship's been really good. Like Frank said, until you're, but I feel good about it.
So your intention would be then to cut through at this location, this location, to gain access? Where, where exactly would you cut through?
There's a parking lot right here already.
Yes.
We drive right through here into the existing parking lot right there.
Well, this calls for their existing dumpster area to go, would you be cutting through that?
We'd be cutting in front of that, we'd be on this side.
So what would happen to your landscaping then?
Keep your room here between the landscaping and that, is that true? That's curb to curb.
Is how, how far?
That's, scale, that's at least 24 feet, if not 30 feet, of a drive.
So the cut through would be from here to here? I personally would be more comfortable.
No, it's there to there.
Pardon me?
Cut through is here to here, there's back to curb to back to curb.
Yeah, I had drawn this line before.
Yeah.
So this doesn't exist, right?
Right, it would be, this is your whole entrance and exit here.
Well, now, this calls for a curb to come out into that section, would that be reduced or eliminated?
This, this is the property corner here.
Yes.
So this curb is on our property.
Yes.
And it comes through this corner.
Right, but it would infringe into, you're saying from here to here, it would infringe from here over?
No, here's the drive, this is the whole drive out here.
So it wouldn't be here to here, it would be here to here?
Well.
Paxton, if I, if I might.
Based on the radius.
If I might, I assume you're talking about this feature right here? If you see, you see where the cursor is?
No, I'm not.
Okay.
The one on the south.
This one down here.
That's, that's a turn radius.
That protrudes, well, it says.
This is a turn radius, so here's curb, here's, so you have about, probably, it's probably about 28 feet. I don't have a scale with me, but from straight line to straight line, Paxton, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's at least 28 feet.
Okay, but it wouldn't be from here.
It would be, I see what you're talking about, not from here, but from here, yeah. We still have about 20, 26 to 28 feet.
Got it, thank you. Well, and I have found the enemy element to be very receptive and eager to get along and do the right thing. But I would feel more comfortable if some of these were met because we wouldn't want you to run into any hipper factor than oil building and then have something come up with engineering and the septic. Why was the septic system not put in as a conventional system? Were the soils not adequate?
We can, our engineer system allows us to take up less space.
I see.
Again, I make the motion that we accept it based on the contingents being met at a future date myself.
What is the max building height of the proposed plan?
It's one, they're one-story, so it'll be, it'll be less than 30, I think 35 feet is the max, it'll be less than 35 feet.
And is there any room for change in plan design as we work through this, or are those plans been submitted already and will be a part of this preapproval?
The construction plans of the buildings? The first step is the zoning for the permit, this permit. The second step would be to go to the county with the building permit request.
To make sure.
But has the design been?
No, we can't, Mr. Gagainis can't even start out until, you know, he feels comfortable with site plan and what we have before you, that's right.
So Jeremy, you're making a motion for the adjustment for 1A through F?
Yes, once it's met.
Or G?
G, 3G, yes.
G, G would be the access easement.
The access easement as well. But until we sort of lay out the preliminary, he now has something to work from and towards.
Do I have a second? To approve the preliminary plan? I'll make the second, can I do that?
I believe so.
All in favor? Vote it down.
We will certainly continue to work with the applicant and with Tidewater Associates to make sure that these requirements are met, and we will plan to bring a revised plan back to you at your March meeting.
Just, just to be clear, the fire comments are just comments that do not need addressing at this time, that is all building related. So we will not be addressing, though they'll be addressed at a later date as part of building permit process.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
Just so everybody's aware.
And I have high confidence they'll be able to meet all of these outstanding items. And so we'll bring it back to you in March, hopefully with everything completely buttoned up.
The next item on your agenda is a discussion of the existing land uses not reflected in the table of permitted land uses. And this has been a topic of interest for several months now. And I had a chance to look at each of the, each of those items in detail and felt that they will require a lot of discussion, a lot of conversation, a lot of thought, and that it would probably be best to discuss them, like, one topic per planning board meeting. And so I proposed an order down at the bottom of your agenda item. The first one would be home, child, daycare, proposed for the March planning board meeting, the pre-existing small cemeteries, the April meeting, libraries would be in the May meeting, and marinas would be proposed for the June meeting. And if you have any questions, I can give you some rationale why, but just didn't want, it, it can be overwhelming. And you may want to look at proposed language, and the language is unique to each different topic. They're very unrelated, there's no thread that goes through them.
I motion to adopt the proposed topic order and meeting dates for review of existing land use and uses not reflected in the table of permitting.
Second? A second, I want to take a vote.
Before we vote, can I just ask a quick question for you? And I believe you did answer this to me. You, you liked the order in which it was, feeling with something that's a little more simple maybe to begin with. I've kind of always been the approach, let's tackle something really hard to begin with, then the rest of it kind of becomes easy. Talk to me, just tell me again why.
Sure, sure. This is a new board.
Yep.
Each of these topics are very different. There are different state laws that apply to different topics.
And to get the exposure, the experience...
Yeah, yeah.
Dip our foot in before we just jump in.
Yeah.
Okay. And I believe Paxton came up with, had a lot of these listed, and she has no problem with the order, then I shouldn't either, so. Yeah, that was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
No, as far as I'm concerned, there's no urgency. It was just when reading over all this stuff as we do, our homework, I just noticed that some zones allow these things and others don't. Why not uniform?
And also, you know, if one of these goes to the Board of Commissioners, you can kind of say, well, we're looking at this comprehensively, sequentially, and this is the first one, and there'll be more, and kind of get them warmed up to the work that you're doing.
Wonderful, thanks.
Okay, we had a first and a second. All approved? And the next one is, who's going to be the next planning board to present what we spoke up tonight?
I did such a good job last time.
Did you really?
I actually showed up very late, and Frank had to take control there. So again, thank you and apologize to the planning board for being tardy.
I don't mind sharing out of the next meeting.
Would you like to do?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
She's more reliable.
Any town comments? Town staff comments?
You can go.
So Frank may have mentioned earlier, but our non-conversion agreement did not get approved by the town board. And it would have, if it had been approved, it would have been points towards helping us to reduce our flood insurance rate. Just to let everybody know, every five years, the community rating system comes and reviews what we're doing to see if our 10% is maintained or what we might be able to do to get to that next 5% lower, 15%. That process is going to take place in this calendar year, and I have a call with them next Wednesday to start the process. I've never been through it before, and I don't know what they're going to say or do. But I'll probably try to bring things back to the board because there are some things in our floodplain ordinance that we might do. Some things are more communication with people. You can get points that way. Some things are with your ordinance. But there are a lot of different activities. And again, it's kind of a learning curve, a little bit of education might help, and it also might help when we take things back to the town board to have a better understanding of what the community rating system is looking for and the actions we might take. So I'll keep you updated as we go forward.
And I looked into that a little bit. There's a list when we get certain points correct and certain things give us more points and less points. Is there like a more, I couldn't find a more detailed list of specifics items to complete. Is that something that you could inquire about on your call?
Yeah, and there is a book.
Okay.
And I can send this out to everybody. This is just general public information. This piece of paper is from 2013, so I don't know how accurate it is, but it was one, from one of their visits here to Cape Carteret. And we got 52 points for this item, 140 points for that item. But that's what I'm trying to figure out, is like, well, where are we today and what's the best way to go forward?
What are our options?
Yeah.
And ultimately, we'll be bringing back that information to you all at a future planning board meeting after we do some more research on it. I do know that the Board of Commissioners in general would like to see the UDO simplified wherever possible. It's a pretty unwieldy document, in my opinion. And so that was one of the reasons why they hesitated with the non-conversion agreement is they felt like it was adding more instead of taking away. So, but we'll do the research on the community rating system points and make sure people are better educated about that and certainly come back to you all at the appropriate time. You may have heard me saying at the beginning of the meeting that they approved all of the other items that were recommended by the planning board at your last meeting. There is an outstanding legal concern with the removal of the ETJ language for the planning board, and we're, I'm still talking with the town attorney, working through that. The Board of Commissioners actually approved essentially what the planning board recommended. We added a sentence basically as a reminder that when someone does actually live in the ETJ, that we need to appoint someone to that. Initially, we believed that that was sufficient to meet the spirit of the law. The town attorney is a little bit nervous about that, and he's going to be looking at that again. Apparently, there's one opinion that even though no one lives in the ETJ, that we still need to have someone appointed to represent the ETJ. And I'm not sure I agree with that, but I'm not the town attorney either. So we're working through that. At any rate, I don't think it's a big issue one way or the other. I just wanted to report back to you all on that, so.
Is that an attorney's opinion? Something, some attorney in authority with the state?
Yeah, I guess there's, you know, the School of Government at UNC is a great resource for city attorneys, city managers and so forth, and there's some publications that they put out that caused Brett, our town attorney, to reconsider that a little bit. So it's nothing that's of any great urgency and really not that big of a deal. We just need to get it right. So that may show up back on your plates at a future meeting as well. So as a practical matter, no one lives in the ETJ, and I don't expect anyone will before your next meeting, so.
Could someone on the board be assigned to ETJ?
That's part of what we're trying to figure out, right? So...
You know, back, I mean...
The statute actually references that the county commissioners would appoint that person. And so the question then becomes, I think the central question is, is if we don't have anybody, anybody living in the ETJ, do we even need to have someone? My practical approach would be no, there's no one to appoint. One approach might be that the county commissioners still have to appoint someone to represent the ETJ, and they could potentially just pick another resident of Cape Carteret, or they could potentially pick somebody who lives in Carteret County. It could be somebody who lives down east, which obviously, that seems a bit ridiculous, and I doubt that they would do that, but that's the thing. So we're just trying to answer those questions and move forward. One thing I would say to you is, if we ultimately go back and add that ETJ slot, my recommendation to you all would be to either reduce the appointees by the town board of commissioners from five to four, or increasing, increase them from five to six, so that the net result is that you have an odd number of planning board members. So of course, now we have the alternate planning board members as well, so probably more than you wanted to know. All that is a long way of saying, we got to look into it a little bit more, so.
So, question. As I recall, the ETJ member was allowed to discuss things with the planning board, but not vote on anything except having to do with the ETJ. So if we were to reduce the number of planning board members in order to have one be the ETJ representative, that would weaken this board?
Well, potentially, but however, the UDO, you're correct, the UDO included language that said the ETJ person could only vote on matters affecting the ETJ.
Right.
That's not a requirement of state law. That's a local policy decision. So we could, we could set it up such that the ETJ member can vote on anything. And in the past, the determination was if it's an ordinance amendment, clearly that affects everything in the ETJ as well as in the town limit, so there really wasn't any question on those. But like, for example, under that language, that if we had an ETJ member, that person wouldn't have been able to vote on either one of these projects tonight because they're not in the ETJ. But that's a local policy decision, and we can set it up so that the ETJ person can vote on everything. And honestly, that would be my recommendation, just so it's not confusing for people in the future if we get back to that. But that's something you all will discuss and the Board of Commissioners would ultimately decide.
It just seems silly to create a position for people who don't exist.
I agree with you.
Well, we could put a county commissioner in the seat that lives in the town of Cape Carteret now. We don't do it, they do it. Robert Comer, I mean, Robert Comer lives here now. Maybe they could assign him. Since he has so much knowledge about the county.
Well, he has retired from county commissioner duties, but you could still get him appointed.
He's a resident of Cape Carteret, right? Correct?
I know he was building the house. I'm not sure if he's actually moved into it or not, so. But he's got a vacant lot in Cape Point, so.
I think he's done with his house in Cape Point. Positive. Is he?
Little bit more, did he?
When will the alternates be appointed?
We are advertising, the town clerk may have done it now. I just talked with her yesterday about running the ads, and I think we set a deadline of March 4th, and my intent is for the Board of Commissioners to appoint them on March 10th, if they're so inclined, so. Yeah, we might have to play some microphone games also, but we'll figure it out, so. Yeah, as you all know, we may have talked about this before, so these obviously do not amplify anyone's voice. They're critical, however, to recording your comments, so that's why it's important to speak into the microphone and have it turned on. Otherwise, we may not actually hear some of Mr. Guganis's comments tonight because he wasn't speaking in the microphone, so that's the only reason for it. But that was, that was all I had.
Thank you. Really, thank you. I would like to bring it to attention that Highway 58 over where that car accident happened, there's a big pothole. If we could get them to fix it.
I'd be happy to. Can you tell me more specifically where it's located? I mean, obviously, I can go out and look at it, but...
It's probably right where, you know, what's that play bar behind Mac Daddy's on the highway? That could be a landmark for you. But you'll see it as a, you go to the right, you start to bear to the right, take a right onto 24 off of 58.
Heading into town. Heading into town.
Yeah.
Coming from Emerald Isle or coming from the north?
Pelletier.
Coming from Pelletier, okay.
Right, and there's a huge hole.
Okay, I'll look for it and we'll communicate to the Department.
Excuse me, wait. Where is that now? What? Where is it? I'm trying to... You know where the young man died in the car wreck? No?
About a year, year or so ago.
The lane starts to open that you would get on the right.
Yeah, where it starts to open up to go to the right.
Just as it starts.
Get there to the right.
Kind of even with the go-kart track? Kind of in line with that? Okay.
Maybe, yeah. Maybe a little before that frame. It's really bad. I mean, you could flip your car if you're going too fast, really.
Yeah, I'll certainly take a look at it and we'll communicate with NC DOT, so.
And one last thing, congratulations on your success with the Department of Transportation, Frank. Congratulations on your success to reduce the speed limit, and we certainly hope you'll be successful in getting a stoplight in Bay Shore and Fox.
Yeah, I hope so. They actually, they completed their analysis based on data in January and said that a signal was not warranted at that location. However, I asked them to reconsider that based on summertime traffic, and so they will indicate that they'll do some more analysis in July, and we'll see where it goes. They did approve the other three requests we put in, so.
Can we get a report from the park department? How many accidents have been there?
Well, that's part of the analysis that DOT undertakes. They're looking at crash data, they're looking at traffic counts in those areas, they're looking at speed limits, they're looking at a wide variety of things, and... Yeah, I know we had a fatality at that location with a motorcycle, I guess, at some point in the past few years.
Sometime ago, kept him right by right.
Yeah. Yeah. So to answer your question, do we need a traffic signal there? So, yeah, so the Board of Commissioners discussed it on a couple of occasions, I think in November and January, and they indicated their support for a traffic signal there, but DOT said, no, it's not necessary there. So DOT, I guess, agreed with you.
Well, we're going to eventually have a walkway on that side, right? Correct? Bay Shore side.
On the south side of 24, yes. We have a grant awarded for it, so. Assuming the current administration doesn't rescind the grant funds, which so far, I think we're safe, but we'll see.
So you'll have people walking in that location, probably more than you realize.
Yeah, I hope so. You know, bicycles and maybe even golf carts, there's been some discussion about that as well, so.
Oh, do you think that they'll allow golf carts on that section?
I know there are some folks on the board who are interested in that. I mean, that would be a decision for them to make once the path is completed, which my goal is to have the path there completed by the end of 2026, and so we'll see.
But that would be one of the only ways people from Bay Shore and Cape Point and Country Flow Point could get to the shopping center. That's right.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's really the reason for the project, right? To create a better linkage between those areas of town and allow people to get there. Now, the golf cart decisions, a separate decision's going to be up to the board to decide. They may think that's wise and they may not think that's wise, so.
Does the Department of Transportation know we're going to have that project put in?
Yeah, the grant funds were awarded by NC DOT. They're ultimately federal grant funds, and that's why there's a question about all of the budget cuts happening at the federal level, but so far, we seem okay, so.
So, you know, with that walkway going in, maybe DOT would count that as a point for a light in that area, traffic light. You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, potentially. The other thing, too, that we don't talk about enough is that that grant, not only does it include the multi-use path on Highway 24, it also includes pedestrian and bicycle traffic signals at Taylor Notion and at the Lowe's and at Golf and Dolphin. So that's going to be, I think, a nice improvement in and of itself for the community, so.
I would like to see the Golf and Dolphin put a gate right there by the trail so people can walk in the Golf and Dolphin. It's a controlled access. They won't allow us to do that. You can't, no, you cannot. It's controlled access because federal money went into building 58, and they will not allow any access from 58 into Mac Daddy's, Golf and Dolphin, Revise, any of those. Well, I would make a climbing ladder that goes over the fence. But no, we would love to. Oh, yeah, I think it'd be great because if you go walk in, you want to get something to eat, walk right in there.
Yeah, we may be able to revisit that for a pedestrian or bicycle access, so we can keep that in mind.
It would be not, that would be good because, you know, if you're walking and need water, you can walk into...
Yeah, makes complete sense, so.
Access to it. There again, anything that makes complete sense might not get approved. Does anyone else have anything else to talk about? No? No, you may? Motion to adjourn. Is everybody in agreement?
Thank you all. Bob, thank you for coming here tonight, so.